Clerk will now read title of the presentation.
Next is State of Schools by Portland Board of Education, Sarah Lentz, Chair.
Welcome chairperson. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Just readjust this. Everybody hear me okay? Beautiful. Oh, I can't see my paper. Hold on. Good evening, Mayor Dion, city councilors and fellow board members and Portlanders. My name is Sarah Lentz and I am the Chair of the Portland Board of Public Education. I would like to acknowledge my fellow board members tonight who are attending. So if you wouldn't mind standing if you're a board member. We have new board member Myalina, Vice Chair Mickey Bondo, District Five Representative Sarah Bryden. And I know there's a couple other folks that are online. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to introduce our superintendent, Ryan Scallan. You can wave. You don't have to stand up. It's all right. We have staff members here. We also have union leadership. We have Carrie Doughty, who is President of our PEA, and Jen Cooper, who is President of our EdTech Union, and other dedicated members of the Portland Public School Team. This isn't in my written remarks, but I'd also like to acknowledge my son. He makes me being on school board possible with everything that he gives up to be here. And also just with all the presence of the fire personnel in the room. Thank you for your service and for keeping us safe. As I stand here tonight to give my third State of the Schools address, I invite you all to just take a moment to ground here together, to be present in this moment. Take a few deep breaths. Roll your shoulders back. Wiggle your toes. Push your feet into the floor. A floor that sits on the land that our city and schools are built upon. Unceded land of the Wabanaki, the people of the Don. The mission of the Portland Public School District charges us to ensure a challenging, relevant, and joyful education that empowers every one of our learners to make a difference in the world. Additionally, it calls upon us to build relationships among families, educators, and the community to promote the healthy development and academic achievement of every learner. This is not a mission that we take lightly, especially as we are Maine's largest school district with 10 elementary schools, two of which are on islands, three middle schools, and four high schools, plus Maine's largest adult education program. Our district has 6,571 students, over 3,000 adult learners, and more than 1,400 staff. In our pre-K through 12 student body, 59 languages are spoken. Thirty percent of our students are English language learners. Eighteen percent receive special education services. And eight percent of our students, that's almost one in 10, are housing insecure. Over 57% of our students and their families qualify as economically disadvantaged, which means they are at or below 185% of the poverty line. That means for a family of four, their income is at or below about $57,000 annually. Our students are incredibly racially and ethnically diverse, with almost 53% of our students being students of color. In 2022, I came onto our board because I believed deeply in our mission. I was proud of the rich diversity in our schools and our bold commitment to equity, to make sure that every student, regardless of their identities, would be supported to succeed. Because of that, I knew my child would get an education here that would be not like other places. I was excited to uphold and protect the work of the district. However, a few months into my service, our payroll and retirement systems crumbled. Our superintendent resigned. Our strategic plan, the Portland Promise, expired. And I learned how fractured our relationships were with many in the community and with our colleagues here at the city. Our district has made substantial progress in all of these areas over the last few years. And I will share more with you tonight about our successes and the areas we still have to grow in. My biggest takeaway during my time on the board, though, is that we will not meet this mission if we do not move forward together. Last year at this time, Superintendent Scallan was already leading the district in creating a new strategic plan that would be built on the successes of the Portland Promise. He traveled all over our community, from community centers to mosques to PTO meetings to multilingual events, to hear directly from community members, families, and leaders about what was working in our district and where we needed to focus our efforts to make things better. He spoke with over 500 community members and encouraged over 900 folks to complete a survey on our district. At the same time, we hired a company called Attuned, who performed a robust data analysis to create an organizational diagnostic, identifying the district's strengths and weaknesses. A stakeholder group of community members and partners used this organizational diagnostic to develop what is now our five-year strategic plan. The board passed this plan earlier this year, and it was also used to inform our budget. As I mentioned before, this strategic plan was built upon the successes of our previous plan, the Portland Promise. Those familiar with the Portland Promise will notice some of its language and concepts echoed throughout the new strategic plan, including equity, achievement, whole student, and people, along with the new strategy systems. This is not a coincidence. Rather, this plan builds upon the great work already happening in the district, but gives us a focus and a plan to improve our work and specific student outcomes. This strategic plan is also accompanied with the specific data-driven mission measures that will help us keep track of our project and progress and indicate if we indeed are closing the inequities that we see in the district. Each of you should have a packet in front of you that includes more detailed information on the current plan. But tonight, I'm going to go through on a high level, giving clarity to each of the five strategies and highlighting examples of already existing successes. The initiatives in each of these strategies move through the same process of design, launch, monitor, and refine. So we've got five strategies and one plan. Our first strategy in this plan is equity. We strive to be an anti-racist, inclusive district by rooting out systemic inequities and vigilantly supporting each student to achieve their potential. While equity is its own strategy, it's also woven through all areas of this strategic plan and serves as a foundation for our work. We're currently designing initiatives to advance staff mindsets and cultural humility in support of equitable outcomes and experiences for our students and family. Future efforts in this strategy include further developing opportunities and systems that improve outcomes for our historically underserved families and students. Designing and implementing enhanced adult education programs. Expanding and strengthening programs that deliver outcomes for multilingual learners. But here are some examples of work that's already happening around equity. During an October visit to Macworth Island in Falmouth, our fourth graders had the opportunity to learn more about the Wabanaki through stories of people and land. Students spent time with a Penobscot archaeologist, learning about the earth and human changes over time and getting to experiencing portaging a canoe. This learning connects to the fourth grader's Dawnland Unit in the classroom and other outdoor and experiential environmental literacy lessons. In fact, we are a state leader in developing a Wabanaki Studies curriculum. The developers of this curriculum, Fiona Hopper and Bridget Neptune, have worked with representatives from the Penobscot, Passamaquoddy, Micmac, and Malacite nations and were recently honored by Bowdoin College's 2024 Educator for the Common Good Award. At Ocean Avenue, having multilingual books in the school library is creating a book buddy experience for students. Librarian Eva Platt says students have had a blast finding matching books in different languages around the library. Having students' buddies read the same book in different languages has helped students feel welcome and connected as they develop reading, literacy skills, and friendships. The books also help promote cultural awareness and inclusivity. And speaking of books, the Portland Public Schools was just awarded $25,000 from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation, which is not an easy grant to get. This fund, these funds will be used to purchase a diverse selection of books for the libraries in each of the district's three middle schools. Each library will be able to buy about 400 books. And these books will benefit students who are English language learners and expand the library's collection of books representing culturally diverse perspectives. Court Kaywood, library media specialist at Moore and Lincoln, Meredith Doyle, a multilingual educator at Moore, and James Ford are the staff that are responsible for this grant. This fall, the district hired a new food service director, Jen Montague. Jen, who is also a parent of two PPS students, has goals of improved food quality through more from-stretch cooking, more nutritious foods in accordance with the improved USDA guidelines around added sugar, more local purchasing, and a more diverse menu that reflects the taste, needs, and cultures of PPS students. Last spring, we also saw 57 students earn the Seal of Biliteracy, which is given to students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation. And some of those students have more than two languages, as you probably guessed. And finally, in May, Deering High School Administrative Secretary Leana Litig won a Recognizing Inspiring School Employees Award for the extraordinary contribution she has made to students and their community. Litig, who is proficient in Portuguese and Spanish, is particularly helpful in supporting Deering's multilingual families. The second category of this strategic plan is achievement. We enhance academic preparedness for college and career and instill a joy of learning in our students by delivering a universally accessible, rigorous, and equitable curriculum. This year, in grades K through eight, we've been supporting the use of high-quality instructional materials that provide students with consistent access to grade-level tasks through full implementation of both CKLA and EL literacy curricula. In addition to the implementation of these curricula, we're continuing the high school redesign process as part of our work to make sure that every student is prepared and empowered. We've hired the company DMG to help us evaluate our specialized services and to ensure our students with disabilities and their families are getting exactly what they need to be successful. In years two through five of this strategy, we'll be focusing on universal implementation of math, science, and language arts curricula. Developing school capacity to provide more effective instruction to multilingual learners. Implementing a plan to increase students' access to enrichment subjects like arts, computer science, and world languages. There's also remarkable work already happening across the district in this achievement category. The Blue Heron, Casco Bay High School's Student Literary Magazine, was recognized in January as a 2023 Realm First Class Magazine by the National Council of Teachers of English. The Blue Heron was the only student magazine in Maine to be recognized. Harry Brams, a student in the groundbreaking cybersecurity program at Portland Arts and Technology High School, otherwise known as PATHS, has achieved a significant milestone by passing, and I don't even know how to say the name of this certificate that this student achieved, Comp TIA-SI-SA+, which is a certification in cybersecurity. And I had to Google it. He is the first PATHS student to accomplish this feat. Also, a special shout out to his teacher, Nate Jalbert. Odyssey of the Minds team at Row and Lyseth Elementary Schools distinguished themselves at the Northeast Tournament in Bedford on April 27. Last year, Row started this Odyssey of the Mind by parents. This year, they were able to send four teams to the tournament and two teams placed in the top three. The Classics team placed second in their problem and division, and Row Technical Team placed first with the special achievement of a perfect score. In April, Deering High School 11th grader Violet Bloom Levine took first place in Tyler Technologies' Main App Challenge for creating a system for easily scheduling parent-teacher conferences. And two Portland High School juniors, Harriet Mishkin and William Guerin, are already contributing to real-world scientific data. This one is really cool. Under Dr. Jose Fernandez Robledo of Bigelow Labs, these students participated in an experiment to test for the presence of transmissible neoplasia, which is a type of cancer in soft-shell clams in Scarborough. So far, they have found that polluted water is a potential catalyst for this type of cancer. This is just one of the 50 internships in the 2023-2024 school year that have been coordinated by PPS staff member Andrea Lewinsky. Oh, this is another good one. Oh, this is just the best job. Simon Bean, an eighth grader at King Middle School, has been awarded $500 of a service learning grant from Payding for a Purpose for his project, Building Community Through Building Birdhouses. Simon hopes his project will aid fellow students in gaining insight to future career paths and opportunities as they continue their education. Simon plans to bring students together to research bird-specific housing requirements and begin their designs. Once the designs are finalized, they'll construct their birdhouses, which will be uniquely decorated by each student and displays through the high school's campus. In May, the Maine Environmental Education Association recognized Portland Public Schools as School of the Year for helping students seek a deeper understanding of environmental issues. Because this work is district-wide, led by environmental literacy coordinator Katie West, the award went to the entire district instead of just one school. We also had seven Portland Public School students named as semifinalists in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. Those students were Madeline Butters, Lawrence Foster, Devora Katz, and Alexander Price of Portland High School, and Deering High School seniors Violet Bloom Levine, Anya Muchado, and Asha Tussing. And finally, in January, the Deering High Debate Team won the 2024 Speech and Debate Championship. Strategy number three is whole student-connected community. In partnership with families and community organizations, we nurture supportive, inclusive school communities that promote belonging and engagement. In this first year of the strategy, we are focusing on increasing the capacity of schools to create and implement whole-school systems, like social-emotional learning curriculum and relationships that provide a joyful, supportive, and safe school culture. Other initiatives include: developing and implementing systems for identifying and delivering behavioral support services; developing and scaling a community schools model to effectively support students and expand access to community partnerships; expanding access to out-of-school-time activities such as sports, clubs, and other non-academic opportunities; implementing student leadership opportunities; and ensuring that we meet commitment to universal readiness for kindergarten through partnership with community organizations. Already this year, our community has been showing up to support our district. In October, world-famous Grammy Award-winning cellist Yo-Yo Ma visited the Merrill Auditorium for a performance with the Portland Symphony Orchestra. Thanks to some enterprising educators, high school students got a unique opportunity to watch Ma rehearse before the concert. In addition, the iconic musician took time to speak to students, as did PSO Principal Cellist Brent Selby. In September, the Portland Public Schools held ribbon-cutting celebrations of the beautiful new renovated Presumscot Longfellow and Reiki Elementary Schools, marking the completion of the Portland's building for our future projects. As a reminder, city voters in 2017 approved a $64 million bond for those renovations. As Superintendent Scallan said, "These buildings provide our students with the 21st century learning environments they deserve and need to succeed." Students and teachers have access to beautiful and improved learning spaces that are essential to facilitating teaching and learning and to build strong, safe school communities, all of which are foundational to the equity, achievement, and whole-student goals of the new strategic plan. Two students at Deering High School were selected this summer as Bank of America student leaders. They won paid internships and connected them to some financial planning resources. Those students were Isabella Figtor and J. L. Mowa. And for nearly two decades, the seven judges of the Maine Supreme Judicial Court have held arguments and appeals in real cases in high schools around the state. This year, on Wednesday, October 9, the state's highest court held its oral arguments in Deering High School, with students from Deering, Portland, and Casco Bay all invited to attend. On October 25, Deering High School also hosted ambassadors, three ambassadors, to the U.S. from French-speaking countries. We saw Laurent Billy of France, Noel Nelson Misone of the Gabonese Republic, and Marshall N'Bodo of the Central African Republic. These events celebrated the French language and heritage in Maine and provided a unique opportunity for students to engage with high-level diplomats. Another opportunity that came up this fall was when the Portland Adult Education held a special public forum hosted by their English-for-speakers-of-other-language students shortly before Election Day. The timely event provided an opportunity for PAE students to engage with state and local leaders on pressing issues like housing, immigration, gun violence, and transportation. This event showcased the efforts of 75 of our Portland Adult Education students, ranging in age from 20 to 86, who hail from countries across the globe. They were representing countries like Somalia, Guinea, Turkey, Angola, DRC, the Dominican Republic, and many, many more. Students asked prepared questions about issues they have been researching and discussing with their classes. As someone who was asked those questions, they were not easy to answer. Separately, we had some sports achievements this year. So we had Portland High School seniors Samantha Moore and Erin Johnson won cross-country state titles, and Portland High won Class A football championship. Congratulations. The Ram Dogs, raise your hand if you know about the Ram Dogs. Okay, yeah, okay, let me tell you what they are. So it's a cooperative of a girls' swim team. So Deering and Portland came together to make one full swim team, and they call themselves the Ram Dogs. It also has members from Casco Bay and Baxter Academy. It's probably one of my favorite adaptations that the district has created. And they won their Class A Girls Swimming and Diving State Championships on February 20. And we like to say "Bah wulf" to these outstanding athletes. Oh, thank you for laughing. This year, we also had tremendous support from members of our community through the Foundation for Portland Public Schools. The Foundation was able to start multiple new funds this year, including an Ed Feeney Athletics Fund, which provides athletic gear to students who can't access it otherwise. And additionally, the family of Megan Mears made a generous and multi-year gift through the Foundation that is infusing our teacher grants across the district. And our fourth strategy is people. We elevate recruitment, retention, and staff development practices focused on ensuring instructional excellence and cultivating an inclusive work environment that supports collaboration and staff well-being. This year, we're focusing on implementing a shared vision for a strong and inclusive staff culture, where staff are valued, affirmed, effective, and supported. An example of this approach is when the entire staff of approximately 1,400 Portland Public School employees gathered in one space, Merrill Auditorium, on August 28 to kick off the new school year as one district. Typically, everyone in the district starts in their own school and in separate schools and in central office. This year, we used a different approach, and it was a one-team approach to generate energy, inspire all Portland Public School employees, and to create a shared sense of belonging. Additional initiatives coming up in this category include implementing recruitment, selection, and support systems to enhance the quality and demographic diversity of staff; strengthening onboarding for staff to increase effectiveness of new hires; strengthening practice of all staff, teachers, and leaders through improved systems to provide regular feedback, coaching, professional development, and evaluation. We know that our people in Portland Public Schools are our biggest asset, and retaining our talented staff is essential to the success of our district and our students. So many of our staff are recognized each year for their outstanding achievements, and this year is no exception. Courtney Graffias, Technology Integration Coordinator, received the 2024 School Administrator of the Year Award. This award honors administrators who have helped develop strong and effective school library media programs in their district. Greg Tossey, who's a longtime Deering High School athletic trainer, received the Bill Cox Service Award for his dedication to athletes' well-being. Michael Loring, lead custodian at Presumscot Elementary School, won Maine's 2024 Migratory Waterfowl Stamp Art Contest. And I just think that's such a great example of the people that are in PPS, because they are just experts at supporting our kids and other things in the world. It makes for such a rich community. Educational technician Jennifer Cooper, also here tonight, won the Maine Education Association's 2024 Joan McGovern Education Support Professional Award. Heather Sawyer, a science teacher at Deering High School, is this year's winner of the Russell Award. This is an honor bestowed upon one teacher who exemplifies a firm commitment to the teaching profession, shares a love of learning with students, demonstrates intimate involvement in the ongoing life and activities of Deering High School. East End Community School students and families came together in May to hold a Danny Day, a celebration of Danny Lowe, who is a beloved crossing guard with autism who has been helping students make it safely across the street for many, many years. The Maine Department of Education announced that two Portland Public School educators have been selected as Teacher Leader Fellows. Joshua Chard, who was also Maine State Teacher of the Year last year, and Melissa France, who's the district's Special Education Multilingual Coordinator, are members of the new class of six extraordinary educators from across the state. Jonathan Graffias recently won, hold on one second, I lost my place here. Jonathan Graffias, Deering High School Computer Science and Technology teacher, is the New England Region winner of a Computer Science Teaching Excellence Award from the Computer Science Teachers Association. Winners excel in inspiring students to explore the computer science field, engaging students in learning rigorous standards-aligned computer science content and broadening the participation of underrepresented students in computing. And finally, Administrator Dr. Grace Valenzuela, who is here also, thank you, Grace, who has devoted her long career to advocating for education and social justice for multilingual students and families, recently received a Lifetime Recognition Award from the Northeast Chapter of Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education. Dr. Valenzuela currently is the district's Director of Communications and Community Partnerships. Was honored for her contributions to bilingual education and language immersion in Maine. The district has recently begun negotiations with our adult education instructors and will soon start negotiations with PEA, our Union for Teachers. We hope to build upon the successes we saw with the new three-year contract with the Portland Education Association for Educational Technicians. This new contract increases pay for ed techs each year over the life of the contract, which we hope will make the district more competitive when it comes to hiring and retaining educational technicians. And last, but certainly not least of our strategies is systems. We develop and implement consistent and clear operational procedures and systems that enhance equity, efficacy, and accountability across the Portland Public Schools. This year, we are focused on developing a data infrastructure so we can build and use dashboards to monitor our progress, something that we haven't had before. We're going to clarify central office roles and responsibilities and implement a sustainable, multi-year financial model to support the strategic plan and equitably allocate resources across the district. This will, of course, including passing next year's budget. Last year, with the support of the council and the Portland voters, we were able to pass a $161.4 million school budget. This year, we hope to pass a similarly sized budget while navigating a series of existing and new challenges. While we don't face the COVID-era SRF funding cliff that we did last year, which is good, we are still confronting flat or decreased funding from the state despite increased need, continued increased costs to existing mandatory expenses like special education costs, salaries and benefits, and debt service, and a potential loss of federal funds due to administration changes. It will take all of us to create a budget that meets the needs of our students while also remaining fiscally responsible to the people of Portland. We welcome the opportunity to meet with each of you and discuss our priorities and look forward to your questions and ideas. and look forward to your questions and ideas. Outside of the budget, I'm happy to report that we have fully implemented ADP, our new payroll system. I'm excited to say that because for the last two years, I haven't been able to say that in this speech, so it's a real big deal. I am grateful to every single finance team member and to our superintendent for their contributions to get us to this point. However, during the implementation process, we uncovered many years of erroneous data related to the contributions we make to Maine PERS, which is our state retirement system. After many conversations with Maine PERS and leadership from our unions, we have hired external support through Barry Dunn to audit all employees dating back to 1996. We expect this effort to take more than a year to rectify all of these employees, but Superintendent Scallan, district leadership, and I remain committed to fully fixing these issues, even if the solution is complex and time-intensive. In addition to continuing to shore up our financial systems, the strategy encompasses other work, like codifying district-wide systems and standard operating procedures for communications, transportation, and family engagement. Much of this work will be informed by our newly-created Boundaries Committee, which is charged with creating a series of recommendations to the board around attendance boundaries at our elementary and middle school levels in service of more balanced enrollment and demographics across the district. These five strategies in our new strategic plan give us a roadmap to an equitable future for our students and our city. Superintendent Scallan often uses the phrase "one team" to describe how he envisions the district tackling everything in front of us. Now, more than ever, I feel part of one Portland Public Schools team. As I look at the work in front of us, I realize that the one team he speaks of is not just those in the school district, but all of us in Portland. Our vision challenges us to create a future where all students graduate prepared and empowered. It will take all of us, our neighbors, our nonprofit partners, our business partners, and all of our elected officials, working together to achieve that future. I invite you to join us as we move forward together. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chair Luntz, for your address. This is a communication, it's not a Q and A. Oh, you can clap. I was trying to read what you were doing with your hands. Thank you, Chair.